All right, let's call to order the Town of Moncks Corner Regular Monthly Meeting, March 18th, 2025. Our invocation will be delivered by Reverend Jim Toth, Assistant Pastor of the First Baptist Church of Moncks Corner.
Thank you for this privilege. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before your throne this evening, asking for your grace. According to your word in Hebrews, Chapter 4, Verse 16, it says, "Therefore, let us approach the throne of grace with boldness, so that we may receive mercy and find grace to help us in time of need." Heavenly Father, we live in a country and a world that is broken, and it doesn't function as it is intended to. But through your grace, we ask for wisdom, because true wisdom sees life from your perspective. Give us grace to serve other people, no matter who they are, no matter what color they are, or their abilities. Give us the grace to treat everyone with dignity and respect, even if they disagree with us. Give us your grace, Lord, to glorify you, and I ask you, Lord, on behalf of many pastors, to revive our country, and may it start right here. Lord, I pray for everyone, every leader that is on this council, Lord, that you would bless them, that you would watch over them, that you would bless their families, that you would give them safety, that you would give everyone here safety as they leave this place. But, Lord, may your spirit fill this place. And I do pray all these things, in the name and through the blood of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilman Dennis will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special presentation tonight. Can I have the Berkeley High School Beta Club come up to the front while I read our proclamation? This is fairly long, and if I get a name or two wrong, please forgive me in advance. Real quick, on a personal level, several of these individuals was here today with the sped class that we had come through, and the way they volunteer and give back, I mean, it really makes us see that our future is bright with these young people. Whereas, the 2025 Berkeley High School Beta Club consists of 182 members in grades nine through 12. Of the 182 members, 140 students attended the state convention in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, on February 6th through 9th, under the outstanding leadership of Lead Teacher Brittany Colley, and sponsors Kathy Jones and Jeremy Colley. And whereas, these students competed in over 100 academic, art, and talent competitions against students from around the state. As a result, 100 students qualified for the national convention, which will be held June 21st through 27th in Orlando, Florida, where they will compete against thousands of students from around the country. And whereas, Mayor Thomas J. Hamilton and Town Council are deeply proud of Berkeley High School Beta Club, and would like to call public attention to this group, and recognize them for their outstanding accomplishments and commitment that advanced them to compete at the national convention. First place, 10th grade, Agro Science Miley Unflit; first place, 9th grade, Psychology, Marley Smith; first place, 11th grade, Social Studies, Keller Walford; first place, 10th grade, Spanish, Ivana Ramos; first place, 11th grade, Social Studies, Caleb Knighton; first place, 12th grade, Psychology, Michael Rogala; first place, Division 1, DE Photo, Aubrey Edwards; first place, Division 1 Pottery, Elizabeth D. Antonio; first place, Division 1 Sculpture, Lily Elliott; first place, Book Battle; first place, Large Group Performing Arts; second place, Show Choir; second place, Campaign Skip; second place, 9th grade, Agro Science, Jordan Hoffman; second place, 10th grade, Biomedical, Kenzie Tweed; second place, 12th grade, Biomedical, Braylee Mead; second place, Division 1 C Writing, Millie Jennings; second place, 11th grade, French, Taylor Washlog; second place, 12th grade, French, Sophia Ramos; second place, 10th grade, Science, Gillian Fisher; second place, 10th grade, Social Studies, Jordan Moon; second place, 9th grade, Spelling, Cooper Schoonover; second place, Division iOS, Addison Almonds; second place, Division 1 Speech, Braylee Ronick; third place, 9th grade, PE, Seela Sevier; third place, 11th grade, PE, Samantha Miles; third place, 12th grade, Science, Ben Tillman; third place, 12th grade, Social Studies, Riley Ballantyne; third place, 10th grade, Spelling, Olivia Dang; third place, 12th grade, Spelling, Riley Bishop; third place, 9th grade, US History, Cortland Dean; third place, Division 1, Mixed Media, Bethany Knighton; third place, Division 1 Woodworking, Addison Gary; third place, Division 2 Pottery, Kalen Bradshaw; third place, Division 2 Speech, Reese Watson; third place, Solo, Duo, Trio, Variety Act, Brooklyn Nelson, Ivana Ramos, Sophia Ramos. Now therefore, be it so resolved that I, Thomas J. Hamilton Jr., Mayor and Town Council Members of the Town of Moncks Corner, County of Berkeley, State of South Carolina, do hereby acknowledge and applaud Berkeley High School Beta Club for their historical achievements, signed on this day, 18 March, in the year of the Lord, 2025. Congratulations.
We'll come and get some pictures, so we'll center this up here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll give them a minute to leave out.
All right. Approval of regular meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes for February 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Second?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Mayor's report. All right. February 20th, I attended the Police Awards Banquet. It was a great event, a lot of good food, a lot of great awards. It's something that I'm really looking forward to every year, to be able to get together with a little bit of fellowship. On February 27th, I attended the Francis Marion Memorial Service in Pineville. March 1st, 2025, attended Community Picnic at Denazarus Reform Episcopal Church. March 4th, I participated in the Reading Across America Event at Mever School of Excellence. March 5th, I went to Florence to watch the Berkeley Stags Girls and Boys Basketball play for the Lower State. March 6th, I attended ribbon cutting for Stephanie Smith's Habitat Home. Stephanie is one of our Miracle League participants. I'm sure a lot of people in this room know her, and that was an amazing event to see her get her home. March 8th, we had a great turnout for Shenanigans in the Park Event. The weather was great, our staff did a wonderful job putting that together. I also went to the Shuckin' in the Park at Santee Canal Park that day. March 10th, I attended Captain Lee Mixon's graduation from the FBI National Academy at Quantico, Virginia. He represented the town very well. The people that come up to him and congratulated him, you could tell that he was held in high regard after that long 10 weeks of training. So, congratulations, Captain Mixon. March 18th, the Berkeley High School sped class visited Town Hall. They got to go and meet the Police Department, the admin, the fire station, and then the Fire Department and Police Department ended up cooking hamburgers and hot dogs for them. So that was a really good event. Upcoming events, March 24th, opening night for the 2025 Home Telecom Miracle League Spring Season for All Ages. The game schedule is planned through Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays through May 8th. We're always looking for buddies to come out and volunteer for this, so if you can, please come out. March 25th, we have the Moncks Corner Police Department invites you to come out to a social to remember our fallen heroes, Corporal Marcus Stiles and PFC Lonnie Wells, between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM at the Moncks Corner Train Depot. Then April 3rd through November 20th, the town will hold our Farmer's Market every Thursday from 3:00 PM to 7:00. The location for the Farmer's Market will be held at Unity Park, located at 101 White Street. We will be able to park at the Hymn Church for that. On April 26th, the town will hold our Pickin' in the Corner, presented by the Town of Moncks Corner and Kalerter's Corner. The event will be held on Main Street. And finally, I want to do a little recognition here. We had a horrific event on March 12th, where we had a car that was hit by a train in town. Our Police Department, of course, come out and did a great job, and our Fire Department did amazing work. To think of the destruction of that car that was hit by an Amtrak train. To respond, to react, to get the young lady out and get her to the hospital to give her a chance, it was absolutely amazing. I've had emails commending our crew. They, some of them are standing in the back. I want to read the names of the firemen that were at the scene. Chief Robert Gass, Battalion Chief Joseph Powell, Captain James Story, Captain Kyle Waldron, Engineer Justin Parker, Firefighter Patrick Olick, Firefighter Gregory Kohler, Firefighter Adam Quick, Firefighter Jonathan Barnhill. You did an amazing job, you did the town proud, and you worked hard for our citizens. So I would like to say thank you very much. That concludes my report. Administrator's report, Jeffrey Lord.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, I have a few projects to update you on. First, let you know that the county ARPA grant that we received for the redesign, redevelopment of Town Hall and the fire station, we did receive that grant money this week. So we've begun the process with the architects, so hopefully we can start moving forward on that. I do want to say thank you to Councilman West and the rest of County Council for, you know, seeing fit to help us out with that grant. Also, the Fox Bank Intersection is still moving forward at this point. They're still waiting on mass arms to be delivered, expected to be done in April. That's the only thing we're holding up the project at this point. But there is some good news. We reached the first annual payment for the bond, and that, if you remember, the developer is responsible for paying the balance on that. We received that last week, so bond payment's made, project's ongoing, so all is going well with that project as well. The Whitesville and Jolly Road Bridge Replacements, we did a walkthrough this week, so a couple punch list items for the contractor to hit, but those projects are essentially done. Glad to finally have those done. Next is Winter Street, which is going to be done by SEDOT. Hopefully, it'll be bid out this spring. And then, of course, California Branch Study, which is to identify the next steps. Staff received the preliminary report, and it's just shy of 600 pages, so very in-depth report. We reviewed it, had a meeting with the engineer last week, so hopefully the final report will be coming out, and then we can start moving forward on next steps of California Branch. Very good effort to get that study done. Other than that, we do have several introductions of new staff for you today.
Good evening, Mayor and County Council. I'd like to introduce you to the two new officers in our department, Officer Jason Santouli and Officer Paul Watson. Officer Santouli comes to us with five years' experience from another agency here in South Carolina. He holds an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice, and he's actually a local person. He graduated from James High, James High, James, sorry, James Island Charter High School. Officer Santouli has an extensive knowledge of traffic enforcement, and he'll be assigned to our Team Four under Sergeant Thomas. Officer Paul Watson comes to us with 20 years' experience from another law enforcement agency here in South Carolina. He's a prior Air Force member, served from 2002 to 2006. What he doesn't know is that he shares a common bond with my daughter, who's also a port dog. He has 12 years' experience as a school resource officer, and he will be assigned to Fox Bank Elementary under Corporal Deck. That's Officer Santouli and Officer Watson.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce you to Michaela Lyle. She's our new Admin Assistant. She'll be up front with Missy, helping with all the business license and customers. She is a mom of two boys, seven and one, and she came to us from a solar company. She did business licensing permitting, so she comes with some knowledge already, and she already got full into business license school about two weeks ago, so she's hitting the ground running.
Welcome.
Mayor and Council, I'm honored to introduce you to the first-ever Miracle League Director, Matthew Fleuharty. Matthew comes with lots of experience. He has got a son that's been in our Miracle League program. We are going on our fifth season, and we are elated to have him. We started out with a handful of kids, and now we're over 80 people, both young and old alike, in our Miracle League program. And so, we had over, we're really overwhelmed, our athletic, our staff was, and so we fought for this, and he will be a part-time worker for us, but he is a full-time dad of a year and a half old, young, and then Trip over here, who is our special needs child, and he is one of our Miracle League children, and he is a joy to have. So we are thrilled to introduce to you our Miracle League Director, Matthew Fleuharty, and his wife, Bree.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've had a couple positions open with inspections. We do have, we filled both of them. One of them is with Tony Bunch. He's got several years of law enforcement background with Berkeley County. After that, he did go try his hand at construction with a couple of home builders, so he knows the trades in and out. The biggest accomplishment in four weeks, five weeks, he's already obtained two certifications, which is Blazing Speed. We expect big things out of him, and I know the builders are working with him well, and he's training up and going to do what's proud.
That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, thank you. New business, Ordnance First Reading. Consider an ordinance adopting a development impact fee study in capital needs plan, establish development impact fees, and other matters related thereto.
Good evening. As y'all had directed us previously, to explore the impact fee possibility for the Town of Moncks Corner, in hopes to make sure that the growth that we are experiencing essentially pays for itself, and make sure that our services that we currently provide our citizens, which we're very proud of, is extended in a quicker manner to the future residents, at no burden to the existing residents. We have performed a, with the help of Tyser Bice and Carson Bice behind me, an impact fee study. We then took this to Planning Commission for their thoughts and process to make sure that the study was conducted per state law. They overwhelmingly unanimously supported this. I think it was a 7-0 vote or 6-0 vote. Mr. Bice is here to explain everything about the report. Y'all should have a copy of it in the packet. I'm available for any questions, if you have any. Essentially, what this will come down to is an impact fee on new development, new building permits only, at specific rates as listed in your packet. For non-residential, it's broken down into square footage. For new residential, it's per unit. And this really goes towards five major categories of the town's services, police, fire, sanitation, parks and rec, and transportation, where applicable. It provides the town a nice ability to, again, move forward as we do experience these growth challenges that we've seen in the past and look forward to in the future. And if y'all have any questions, either about the specific report itself or the process, either myself, Administrator Lord, or Mr. Bice should be able to answer those questions.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. I'm Carson Bice with Tischler Bice. Presentation going to be pulled up? Oh, there it is. Sorry, of course. See if I can read this correctly. Okay. A little bit about us, we're based in Bethesda, Maryland, in Boise, Idaho, and we're the national leader in dealing with cost of growth issues. We specialize in fiscal and economic impact analysis, as well as impact fees and infrastructure financing strategies, and we've done more of this type of work than anyone in the country, and we've certainly done more in South Carolina, which here you see a list of our previous and ongoing South Carolina assignments. A little bit about impact fees, as Justin mentioned, they are assessed on new development only. It is a one-time payment. It's designed to offset new residential and non-residential developments' impact on your various infrastructure systems. It's important to note that we cannot use impact fees for operations or maintenance or repair. We have to account for the money separately, and I'll go into that a little bit more here in a few minutes. I'd also like to emphasize that an impact fee is not a tax, and the reason I say that is, I can't tell you how many, you know, town or city or county meetings I've been to where someone claims, this is just a tax on new development. And as we all know, a tax is revenue raising in nature, and in many states, you have to go to the voters to raise a tax, and a fee is very different than a tax. A fee is designed to cover the cost of something. So for instance, when the town sets its building permit fees or its site plan review fees, those fees are set at a level which you cover your direct and indirect costs of performing that services, or performing that service. With impact fees, it's even more stringent. We have to meet three legs of a legal test. We have to establish nexus or need, so through the report, we have to show that the town has been growing, that growth is going to continue, and if we want to maintain our current levels of service, then we need to expand our infrastructure systems. The second part of the legal test is we have to establish or show benefit, and we show benefit in two ways. One is through the timing of the expenditure, and in many states, such as South Carolina, the act prescribes the timing of the expenditure, and I'll go into that here in a second. The second part of the benefit test is geographic. In jurisdictions the size of most cities in South Carolina, we really don't have to get into geographic benefit districts, because most communities are providing levels of service on a townwide or a citywide basis, and so we don't have to guard against a fee payer paying the fee in the south, but an improvement to a park happens in the north, because we have a townwide level of service for parks. So that's what we mean by benefit. And then finally, we have to show proportionality, and as Justin mentioned, the fees are structured per type of housing unit and by per thousand square feet of non-residential activity. So we just don't have a residential fee versus a non-residential fee. We bifurcate those into single-family versus multifamily, retail versus office versus industrial, et cetera, because each of these land uses generate different indicators of demand. So for instance, for talking about a service such as parks and recreation, in most communities around the country, the census data will show you that single-family units have more people per unit than multifamily units, and so the fee has to be commensurate with that demand. I did mention impact fee acts, and at this point in time, there are 29 different states that have an impact fee act. South Carolina is one of those. There are a lot of commonalities in most of the acts, so for instance, you know, all the acts talk about counting for the funds separately, publishing an annual report, you know, not co-mingling the funds into your general fund. Your annual report can be as simple as a one-pager that says, "We took in X amount of dollars in park impact fees this year, we expended Y amount of impact fees, and here's our balance going forward." There are a few quirks to the impact fee act in South Carolina. One is the timing of the expenditure. There's been a lot of confusion about this with our clients, and, you know, because most impact fee acts will say, "You've got 10 years to spend the money," or "Seven years to spend the money." In South Carolina, it's three days from the, or excuse me, three years from the scheduled date of construction in the CIP. A lot of communities have thought that that meant that if I pay an impact fee today, you have to expend my money within three years. No. What we're saying is, if you're going to build a new fire station and you have programmed it into your CIP in 2027, you need to have expended that money by 2030. The other interesting thing about the South Carolina Impact Fee Act, and it's the only act in the country that has this provision, it says you have to estimate the effect of imposing an impact fee on affordable housing within the town. Really doesn't provide us a definition of affordable housing. It really doesn't prescribe any sort of amelioration measures if we do find that it does affect housing affordability. It just says that you have to conduct an analysis. And so there's a lot of confusion and questions about what that exactly means in South Carolina. Another thing we have to do is part of the methodology or part of the study is we have to evaluate the need for credits. And what I mean by credits is that we have to guard against new development paying twice, once through the impact fee, and then again through debt service payments or dedicated revenues. So the first two credits I want to talk about are debt service and dedicated revenues, and those are, for lack of a better term, they're baked into the methodology already, okay? So they're part of the impact fee calculation. The third type of credit is what we call a site-specific credit, and typically what happens in this case is that the town would negotiate a development agreement with the developer who, for instance, may provide land for a park. Well, your park impact fee has a land component to it, or your police and fire impact fee has a land component to it. So if a developer were to give you the land, you would have to make that developer whole through that development agreement. In terms of the impact fee study we conducted for the town, as Justin mentioned, there are five different fee categories. We did a Parks and Recreation Fee, has three components, land, the improvements there on, meaning amenities such as ball fields, gazebos, playground sets, et cetera, and then also multi-use trails. For police, we had station space as well as vehicles. For fire, there is station space and apparatus and vehicles. For sanitation, there are sanitation facilities and vehicles, and then with transportation, it is limited to intersection improvements only. In terms of the process, it's a very straightforward process, no matter what jurisdiction you're working in. First, we have to determine, as part of that establishing that nexus, we have to determine what the town's existing development base is and make a projection of growth going forward. We meet with town staff to talk about your inventory of infrastructure, define what your levels of service are, and look at capital needs that you'll need to construct in order to serve new development. in order to serve new development. We evaluate different methodological alternatives. We evaluate the need for those credits that I mentioned, calculate the fees, estimate the effect on affordable housing, and then go into the public adoption process. This slide here summarizes the development projections, and I'm gonna take a step back, give them the angle so I can read this. We are projecting over the next 10 years about 11,725 additional persons, and they would be living in about 4,550 additional housing units. We are projecting jobs of almost 1,150 additional jobs over the next 10 years, and those jobs would be within 490,000 square feet of non-residential square footage. It is an important point to make that for almost all the impact fees, because of the approach we took, the development projections don't drive the fee calculation. So if we're taking a snapshot or what we call a consumption-based approach, we are taking or looking at your existing infrastructure today compared to the types of demand units that they serve. So there is no existing deficiency, so to speak. So in other words, we're not saying we're gonna build X amount of parks and then divide it by that projection of future population. So we've insulated you from sort of the vagaries of the market in terms of the general fund being on the hook for impact fee revenue that doesn't occur if we'd have done what we call a plan-based approach, which does look at your development projections and divide future infrastructure by those projections. So the fee amounts are insulated from these projections. This table here summarizes the draft impact fees. The total impact fee for single-family units at what we call the maximum supportable level is $4,804. A multifamily unit or apartment is $2,606. For the non-residential fees scheduled, that's done by, in 100,000, or excuse me, 1,000 square foot increments. We do have categories of retail, office, industrial, institutional, and hotel, which is per room. The highest fees are for the retail use at $3,987 per thousand square feet, followed by institutional uses at $2,333 per thousand square feet, office at 18, 17 per thousand, hotel at $1,154 per room, and industrial $828 per thousand square feet. We did look at the impact on our housing affordability, and we've done this many different ways throughout the state. But I think the cleanest, easiest way to understand this is what does the imposition of the draft impact fees or the maximum supportable impact fee, what does that do to a mortgage? Okay? The fee amount is the same regardless of the interest rate. It's just how, what does it add to the mortgage? So you can see here that it's, if we assume an interest rate of 2.5%, it's $19 on a 30-year mortgage. At an 8% interest rate, it increases to $35 per housing unit. So I'm not trying to, you know, gloss over the fact that it is an increase to the cost of housing, but when we put it in the terms of that it gets passed on to a homebuyer in a robust economy, and we factor that into the cost of house and amortize that over 30 years, it's really, as I said, worst-case scenario in an 8% interest rate market, it's $34 or $35 a house per month. Finally, most elected bodies we work with want to know, well, if we were to adopt these fees, where does this compare, or how do we compare to other jurisdictions that we may look at as peer communities or other jurisdictions within the state of South Carolina? And you can see here, we've compiled this from our work across the state. And if you were to adopt these fees as is, you would be in the top 50% of the fees, of the jurisdictions shown here, but just barely. You can see here, we've got, I think, 11 or 12 jurisdictions, and there are four that have impact fees higher than you. Again, if adopted at 100% of the rate, and if you adopted all five of the impact fees. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I do have a question. Is it uncommon for these impact fees not, you know, I understand they're going to specific categories as far as police, fire, recreation, and things of that nature. But is it uncommon for it not to be allocated more towards infrastructure improvement with more residents moving into the area and putting more strain on the roads, stormwater, that sort of thing? Do any of the other states allow for that, or is this a South Carolina, obviously a South Carolina rule that we're dealing with as far as the allocations?
Right. So I'm not sure I understand your question wholly. I mean, you do have the ability to do stormwater impact fees in South Carolina, but stormwater isn't an impact fee, or isn't an infrastructure category that lends itself well to impact fees for a lot of reasons. Because in most jurisdictions we work in, most of your stormwater needs are a result of inadequate regulations 30 years ago, right? And so the idea is that, you know, if we shut the door tomorrow, we still have 30 million in stormwater needs that we'd have to tend to. We, because the town currently is not in what I call the road-building business, you're not building or actively building arterial collector capacity, that's why the focus is on infrastructure, or excuse me, on intersections. Did I misunderstand the question?
No, no. It's just general infrastructure because obviously more people, more traffic, more wear and tear on the roads. And to be honest with you, South Carolina Department, DOT is not very good at repairing roads.
I'm very well aware of that.
Yeah. I was just curious if that's what everything is essentially about.
Yeah. I mean, so different acts allow for different impact fees. There are none that allow you to reconstruct roads as part of your, you know, pavement management plan or anything like that. You have to be adding capacity to the network.
Makes sense.
In all cases. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for all your work. It was a very comprehensive report. Personally in favor just for the fact that as we grow, I mean, a baseline fire truck is a million dollars, and, you know, a police car outfit is 80,000. I mean, things cost money. And we, to me, shouldn't put that burden on the existing taxpayer. We should spread it to the new development. So thank you so much for the work you've done.
Quick question, if I may. When we're looking at the impact fees, how do you normally see these going with small businesses? Because obviously, when I'm looking at this, one of my concerns is small businesses that want to come out of the ground, are we stifling their growth? This town was built on small business. So are we, are we creating a problem there that you see, or that you have seen in other places?
Good question. So one of the things that we have done to, or we always do, to sort of mitigate the fees on smaller businesses, because, you know, for instance, in the old days, the office and retail fees we used to do were, because there's, the Institute of Transportation Engineers data, which is where we get all of these demand indicators from, does have demand indicators by size. So for instance, retail, in the old fee schedules, we'd go like 0 to 25,000 square feet, 25 to 50, 50 to 75, et cetera, et cetera. The problem with that is there's an inverse relationship in office and retail, the size versus demand. So big boxes have more, or have less employees per thousand square feet and less vehicle trips per thousand square feet than smaller ones. So we, so we basically average them to mitigate the impact on small businesses. Having said that, there is always that argument that, you know, particularly in a robust economy, as I mentioned, that the fees will get passed on. Also, a general rule of thumb is we aren't allowed to discriminate against land uses or pick winners and losers. So we can't say that, you know, we're not gonna charge non-residential, we're only gonna charge residential. We can't say we're gonna adopt 100% of the residential fees, but only 25% of the non-residential fees. If we waive a fee or exempt a use from fees, we have to make up the difference from the general fund. And generally speaking, it's, those waivers or exemptions should be in support of some sort of policy that the town has. To answer the other part of your question, because this, because I think I know where you're going with it. I've been doing this 32 years. We have, I think, 90-something impact fee jobs right now, and over 60 of those are repeat clients. All I can say is jurisdictions wouldn't be on their fifth or sixth impact fee update if the impact fees were driving development away.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Old business, there's no old business to be brought before council. Public input. If you signed up for public input, I will call your name. Please come forward to the podium, state your name and address. You will have three minutes to speak. This time is to give citizens a chance to give the town officials feedback. If you would like any follow-up and have checked the box on the sign-up sheet, someone from the appropriate department will be in touch. This meeting is for the council and myself to do the business of the town of Moncks Corner, so discussion on what you address may be limited. Thank you. Our first speaker, Matthew Fluardi. He left. Dana Ball.
Hi, good evening. Name is Dana Ball, address is 1110 Avery Drive. I'm here to express deep concern about the current traffic conditions at the intersection of RC Dennis and Edward Drive, as are many of my community members tonight. Just last week, an incident occurred involving a car waiting to turn left into our neighborhood, and we fear this will only get worse with the proposed 80 townhomes and some more that are gonna be built on RC Dennis. We urge the town to consider widening RC Dennis to include a dedicated left-turn lane onto Edward in addition to the exit widening already proposed. This change would improve traffic flow and most importantly, reduce the risk of further accidents. Additionally, it is frustrating that an information request submitted in February has still not been fulfilled. Under South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, today marks the 25th day, which the law state should take no more than 35, sorry, 35th day. State law says that it should take more than 35 calendar days to fulfill. The fact that the town does not view this as a matter of public interest and is estimating a cost of over $250 for information is concerning. Transparency and public safety should be a priority. We ask that you take action to improve the intersection and provide the information that we have requested. The safety of our community does depend on it. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Now, executive session, I need a motion to go into executive session, discuss contractual negotiations related to the provision of the fire service, receipt of legal advice related to the nuisance enforcement, personal matter in the police department. Motion? Second?
Pardon the interruption, Mayor.
No, no, sir. You didn't sign up. You don't, no. The sign-up sheet was... The sign-up sheet was up at the door. Before the meeting starts. So...
So the person that left earlier, can one person speak in place of that?
No, sir. The sign-up sheet's done. We run an orderly meeting. Second? And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're in executive session.
Orderly, but not fair. There was no, it wasn't...
I gotta go home and change and go to work.
Rather than saying what you're doing.
All right.
Make a motion to go out of executive session and back into regular session.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Counsel is out of executive session and there was no action taken during executive session. Adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.